Five sixteen. Call me the order.
I'm glad you're interested in the United States of America. And to the Republic, we would attend one nation under God, in the world, whatever we need to have.
Alright, see ya. Better have him on. How about now?
Okay, yeah, we're kind of working it quite a bit, uh, for like a little bit, I think he's good now.
Okay. Um, we will do the agenda for the fundraising committee. Pretty vague, but kind of cover enough stuff. I think the most do is a pretty big agenda. I'm not having an agenda. You got anything there?
No.
Brock, you got anything? You on a second?
All right, anyway, hi, hi. Uh, fundraising ideas, I talked a little bit with Chelsea and a lot of my ideas got shut down because you can't do that. Because of kind of where we sit with the city. Dung apple, we can't do, because we can't find them. Um, things like that. Auditors do a number of other things related to, uh, statewide donations, there's stuff like that. Um, right now, I would like us to see, to see us get some, uh, buckets up at the grocery store. Um, if other businesses will let us spend, you know, make changes to ask people, like, you know, there's some pennies for pools, I think we did that, uh, previously. Um, with, obviously, you're not going to miss the whole amount that we're gonna even end that, but it's better than what we have now. Uh, now, if one idea, um, I think we need to get started on that as soon as it pans. Obviously, we're kind of missing the timeframe, sort of that last fall, but we didn't really know where we were at. We thought we were gonna be doing a two hundred thousand dollar project instead of a seven hundred thousand dollar project. On the pool, um, any ideas you guys have, Dana, Brock? Kind of the same, uh, yeah, forget it. I just talked to Chris yesterday at, uh, grocery store two, and he said the store is willing to have those buckets at each hill. Um, the only thing, obviously, one of us board members would need to go collect those, take them to Paul, or take them to the bank to get counted probably every couple days. Who are not sitting there with some change in them. Um, and then Chris said too, once it kind of starts warming up this summer, he would be opposed to, you know, doing some cookouts at the grocery store. Uh, ribs, ribeyes, kind of whatever, and, uh, working with the store to, um, maybe buy the meat for a cheaper price, and then I'll proceed. Uh, come to us. Um, those are a few things that were brought to my attention, um, other than that, so we open the ideas anybody has there.
Any ideas? So, I mean, you know, the letter that we had got at the bank last fall was on a hundred eighty thousand. I mean, is that not what we're doing anymore?
No, and I'll, I'll be honest with you, I'll take the broad end of it as president. The letter was definitely sent out prematurely, we didn't really know what we were doing. Um, I personally didn't approve the letter to be sent out, approved for my name and my phone number, so I'm there. Um, if it was up to me, I would not have sent the letter out, obviously. It says a hundred eighty thousand dollars, we thought we were looking for a two hundred, two hundred fifty thousand dollar project, we didn't cover, obviously, the remainder of that. Um, then we finally got the pool company to come talk to us, they talked to us last month. Um, they're suggesting to us, um, instead of that two hundred thousand dollar project that we were looking at originally. Um, lifespan of that is maybe five to ten years, and that's not a guarantee, they've seen a lot of issues with that. And then they're gonna start all over, uh, sandlotting, repaying, refinishing the pool. This new project that we're looking at is going to be, um, obviously, extended to us, we're getting a new pool, to the swimmers, like, sorry, people that aren't gonna notice it. Um, they're not gonna do, we're getting a new pool, but to us, the end up, uh, work that they're gonna do is, they're gonna get rid of, I believe, we have fifteen eighty feet skimmers in the pool right now. With their, uh, um, they're into a, they take the water out of the pool to the filter system. Um, they'll alleviate that, they'll cut the concrete back on the pool deck, I believe it's like three feet, two or three feet. Um, and then they'll go down about eighteen inches as well, they're gonna put in a grate system, gutter, uh, gutter system into the pool. Which, where, like I said, alleviates those, um, the street birds or whatever, and it eliminates like, there's like trickery, some penetrations in that pool.
Yeah.
For all the. And our pool is with that same system, that part of the project, um, the piping underneath the pool, the intake to and from, so taking the water to the pump. Um, filtering on and then returning it back to the pool, is forty five years old. Um, obviously, when we opened the pool, every year, we did some sort of issue with a pipe. Um, it cost us money, and obviously, they fixed that, did the sun, could have replaced that pipe. Um, so they'll leave ninety five percent of our piping underneath the pool, the remaining five percent would be there, which is already in the pump room itself. And that's just gonna be where the water is taking out of the pool, and then returned back to the pool. Uh, that's kind of phase one of the project that would be done, uh, they would like to do that, uh, starting in the fall, on the depending on how the fall plays out, uh, with snowfall and the weather. Um, could possibly finish that portion of it, and then either come back in the spring, finish that portion of it, pour in concrete, getting everything installed. And then, uh, they would install a pool liner after that, once the weather cooperates, where they can get the liner in. Now, our thought process wasn't, the question that we had for them when they talked about that was, well, could we do the liner, to what is still only about two hundred thousand dollars to do? Could we do that, and then come back and do the big portion of it, the five hundred thousand dollars to do, uh, the gutter system? And then, pretty much said, why would you ruin a two hundred fifty thousand dollar liner, and then come back and tear it apart, and then we just have it? So, why not do it all in one, do it instead, kind of how they're doing it? But that's where we got to the, um, roughly seven hundred thousand we need to get back there, uh, we asked them to, when they were here last month, to give us, um, more. Oh, more in depth added, what they're gonna do, and we added a few things to be idiot compliant, our, our whist, um, in the pool. Give us issues every year, submit the batteries aren't working, or if there's something wrong with the whist, so we're technically not idiot compliant when that's not working. So, we want to install some sort of ramp or stairs that would make us, um, idiot compliant in that. Uh, Judy had some grants that would pretty much cover that portion of it, um, to become idiot compliant, some way to get back from associates, or. I don't know if there was, just seen our jobs drop, and thought maybe they're not so serious, and I.
Is it feasible to do it this year?
No, not this year, maybe, for sure not this year. Um, like I told Paul, he gave it here, I was crunching numbers, trying to make it feasible this year, but numbers obviously don't lie. Um, we can't do it this year, it, it's ho- hopefully, I mean, it's been the talks for the last two, three years to be doing this, and it just seems like something progresses first before this. Or I think this needs to become our priority, to get it done, not this fall.
Want me to throw, uh, want me to throw my, my, my idea?
Yeah.
Have you, you guys looked at the Parks and Rec, the water conservation grant?
Have not.
It's pretty much the only thing that's out there right now. Um, the only negative is the Apple's recent project opens May first of next year. But you have to have fifty percent of your funding lined up at the fifty fifty next year.
Okay. So, for twenty six, and when that is on?
Yeah, May, May first to twenty six, and it closes May thirty of twenty six. So, you kind of have to have all of your ducks in a row.
What was the grant in fifty?
It was fifty fifty.
I forgot the name of it, sorry, Parks and Rec Conservation Act.
It's the North Dakota Parks and Rec Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. And, um, Mike knows, the director, Tony Shell, Shell, so we were, uh, he was gonna give him a call. And if you guys were open to it, um, they could maybe send someone else that went with it next year, you know, to kind of walk through, if that. I know it works for pools, because a lot of the small towns that use it.
Right.
So, I mean, if you're talking a seven hundred thousand dollar project, you get three hundred fifty for it, I mean, that's pretty much huge. So, but you have to, you know, with a grant like that, you gotta have fifty percent of your funding committed, with, with pledges, loans, donations. But that's just the meantime here, up until maybe next year, it had a.
Right. And that for, like, there's one document, a letter prematurely, and one, obviously, I have to follow it, obviously, being president. Um, but now, I have to go back out with a letter, or go to businesses door to door, I, it's gonna hurt to have to do that. If they actually are a hundred eighty thousand dollar project that we told you about, is now seven hundred thousand dollars.
But I mean, my, with, with that, with, um, like, my recommendation would be to have, like, a, a good, you know, clear idea of what, you know, what the project, what you guys kind of know now. Like, what, what the thing is gonna be. Um, and then, you know, have what the business is gonna get, right? And this is the best recommendation, you know, he's given us some sort of plan or something like that. And I think it's beneficial to have gears, you know, with, with some sort of finesse.
Yeah.
Because it does kind of, you're kind of trapping the donate, you know? Because it's like a lot of, of businesses are gonna be, well, I don't wanna be in the bottom here, you know, and I don't wanna be, you know, I don't wanna be down here. You know, and so, and that's a, and that's a good way to get more money than you're thinking, and then I think with the projects of this size. You know, you want to identify the big players and go, you know, go and try and get them first, because if you get a few of those upfront, a lot of other people fall in line. Like, oh, well, yeah, we really got a commitment of X from these people, well, then they're like, wow, they do, it's from how I'm gonna do. You know, it's, it's kind of, it can kind of become a domino effect.
Right, right. Kind of near point of what this thing would help at, like, without something like that, not the grant, I don't even, I just don't even know if it's useful to do it. I mean, the stuff you talked about this, and even if it took out some, uh.
I know, I remember you talking like.
Couple five thousand.
I mean, I'd answer, I find it high.
Like, I would do that, but I would put. And not the park to do on the grant, and giving some nice presentation for the businesses and other community members, and people in the community that would donate. You know, so that you can get that fix, because you get one person to give money, and you've made up for all of that other stuff. You know, with one person.
Right. And I think you probably just need to have some sort of, like, a commitment to work on it, but then you bring it and present it to everybody, so that everybody knows what's going on, and then everybody agrees it before it goes further, right?
I would, um, I just ask for a motion that we would need to advertise the fundraising committee, I know we do have a fundraising portfolio. But I do hear a good, uh, I just have to play on topic, but you didn't have like the timeline of funding, and then just kind of information on that.
I guess I'll reset my motion and wait till, um, yeah. Yeah, cause I can call on this financial report, first, but not after the report, fundraising update. Um, and that's my thing, due now, is I'm assuming, and I, like I said, I crunch numbers today, I sat in my office all day, or all afternoon, thinking, how are we gonna raise this money, what can we do? Um, then another thing I thought of is, for some of these grants, um, asking you in the city for, uh, sales tax, uh, stuff like that, is a lot of these places want a bid of what we've expected. Or some of these other companies may not want to bid out to the fall of twenty, twenty six to twenty seven. Cause it, cause it's the numbers that are fluctuating with this place in, and obviously, labor, and all that. Um, so that's kind of the struggle now is to say, hey.
We're in the process.
We're in the process.
You're not, or can you give us a bid for that?
I don't think they're gonna say, I'll come back next year, just I'm an asset for it.
But that would be a thing with that grant, is to get someone from the Parks and Rec out here. So, they can kind of walk, like, what other, uh, you know, communities and business projects, like, how do they approach them? Cause they probably have a nice roadmap, where isn't your parent over to you guys, and they're like, here's, here's how to do it. Here's how to lay this out to us, you know, next year, to kind of prepare yourselves for this initiation of the grant. And maybe there's, you know, there's no other grants out there now, but maybe there's other stuff coming down the pipes that we don't, that we're not aware of, that's not even out on the website.
Right. Um, another fundraising idea, not really idea, but I have is, obviously, we got mine right now, and I see, uh, actually, a community that's coming due, I believe, in the middle of March.
I think April, so.
March, so beginning in April. Um, and in crunch, again, crunching numbers, Paul's gonna laugh at me, but here they are. Um, what if we call and didn't tell them to, it's financial. When that CD comes due, we have a hundred fifty thousand dollars in there right now. Our expenses that we had last year were like two hundred ninety thousand, five ninety nine sixty nine. But we also put a new park up, um, and then looking back there in twenty twenty four, expenses for parks to, uh, twenty three, expenses, they were like thirty thousand dollars more. I know we did some, uh, projects, uh, with Riverside Parks, the bathroom, um, and then the wood tip, I believe, were kind of the two big things that fell into place there, so that, so that we'll do.
Yeah, so, and that's what alleviated, my numbers that I got, would be like about eighty two thousand. Would it be feasible if when that comes due, to put it back into a year long CD, run it out of one fifty, put the interest that we got on it, plus to make it even two hundred thousand for a year? Would we be able to?
I'm gonna say it would be really tight as far as, if I could go along for it, I don't know, because.
And that's kind of what I thought with my numbers, are expenses are going up as far as, um, wages, expenses are going up, you're, you're looking at some different other projects that are needing to be done also. Um, the gutter zone, uh, the pool, um, the Riverside Park, that whole thing needs to be redone, and it's gonna be the talks for at least a year now.
There's, there's, there's a lot of things that I think you could have a pretty tough time getting additional fifty dollars to put back into that, and it's easy for a year.
So, it could be something we can reevaluate when that does come due?
Yeah, that and the fact that those meetings on the CD that dropped so much now, almost, almost not worth, just haven't locked up for a year.
And I don't know how, what the penalties are, if you have to take it out early, uh, maybe like three months of interest, I think. Big president. Oh. A bigger sale?
I guess.
Um, that was just another thought I had, but again, like I told you, a couple extra letters. I was crunching numbers, I'm not a CBA or financial guy, so.
I, yeah, so, so, so whatever you need as far as we're interested right now, I just don't even know if it's worth having a lockout for, for that long, unless twenty next year is, I mean, it's just been going down, and.
I don't even, there's a couple extra bands, I mean, it's not, you're not dead yet, I'm just over it, right?
I mean, it's, it helps, but, yeah. Yeah, you're like a way too smaller number for the project, but you're like a fit one, I think, unfortunately.
Okay. Any other fundraising ideas?
I had about sending out, like, a letter to, you know, how the school sends out the bills into alumni.
Yeah.
Because, you know, we got an article, and we're doing, uh, you know, we're, uh, we like, you know, feeling, you know, big stumps, because, you know. That they go, oh, yeah, I remember going to bring them around, and that's maybe they.
And that's, I want things coming up, too.
Now, and then, you know, think about.
Yeah, I think giving, giving a committee and giving a co-. Giving, uh, uh, good plans, to kind of do some, you know, that is a good donation, you know, you should be posting on that, to kind of do some tracking. You know, you could have, uh, you know, a level of little leaders with the money, you know, cause it's gonna be a long, this is not a big short term.
Well, that's kind of, we just, we just.
Okay.
Thermometer.
I mean, people like those at school.
Yeah, because money on those products that I don't have, I see enough for commerce, from that conference, where, you know, everybody's sending out different things. So, I suppose the city sends out the, um, water to that, you know, whatever's water level, I would come up with something. That doesn't matter, or have something on, you know, on the bottom of the water, though, or ask another, you know, or then they're sending out something, you know?
I didn't even, of course, you did it down in the pool, actually, with a thermometer, and it was still up with like water.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That, that, that would be pretty neat, that would be cool.
I would get that to not mold, though, if it takes a while. Oh, that water just.
Yeah, and then.
That's what we.
I added a good option, so.
Sorry, I think it's with water, and then have it, and every time you have to add, you have to, like. Would you think, me and Jack kind of talked about this too, you know, setting up an actual, just a, another stadium's account, just for the fundraising money? We already have one for the pool, but doing another one just for fundraising.
Well, we definitely could, um, I would say there is a couple words, just because they have another account that's gonna come up money.
And that's, it's, it's yours to add to this decision.
And that's, and that's, I think, is, it's always like, when we're going through financial reports, it's always gonna be an asset of ours, like, if something's missed, or missing to add more money. But like Dana and I talked about, is that fund is really for this project.
Yeah, we put a minimal donation, like, yes, in three months, if that money doesn't, you know, end for something else.
That's where our concern was, is that we want to be able to show that that account is growing as well. Um, instead of putting it into that thing, I know it says pool savings or pool updates, but to me, and I think in a community, and it's actually.
Do one just specifically for that.
Yeah, when a donation comes in, when, you know, two communities get a donate, or K V services, gets whatever. That's why not automatically go to that thing. Not to the whole pool account itself.
And I think that's how that account got started, was for.
Yeah.
Um, the pool renovation project, but just so that.
But something happens at the pool, and we have to fix them, and we're not using the fundraising money for that project, or using it out of the actual pool. And then it's gonna kind of give us an idea too, of, hey, this pool, they need is that two hundred thousand dollars. You know, what of that two hundred thousand dollars is gonna be for our renovation?
And we're, we're gonna be able to do that now, who knows, you probably be able to tell us, hey, of this money in this hidden account now, they're, they're active.
And it's only important as, as a data one, for people to use, or you guys be able to see on the financial.
I think it's like, trying to, people are donating money for a big project, they don't wanna see the money getting used for.
Right.
X, Y, Z.
Right, and first they bring us our extra money tomorrow, yeah, um, in this project, and then it's redone till fall twenty, it started in the fall twenty six. You know, there's gonna be a lot between now and then, where we can show that, hey, your money is in this account. It didn't show it through that weekly price that we had in the spring.
Did you mention to anybody down the board about having, you know, the case to wash from? Having a bucket there, so like, when they came, come to the case to wash from, there'd also be somebody, you know, from the park board explaining that pool, they can have a bucket there. Because the proceeds from case to wash from, or even watch my, from my desk, will go to the swimming pool, renovations and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, I think you'd be like ready that year.
They could, yeah, someone from the park board, they're, they're.
When you said the washroom, sorry?
It's okay.
I think it's just what, what totally was saying, you know, and, and all of this stuff, the buckets, the, the teams, and. They gotta have a different team's plan, and a collateral statement, so that everybody knows what it is that's going on. Cause they're putting a bucket out somewhere, saying the pool needs money, just, you know, people going early, and just really wanting this to work and get out, or looking at this massive project, we need the community to be involved type of thing. I think probably, this is, this year would probably be a pretty good time to get formed more, because you did so, so much with the swimming lessons last year. There's a lot of people that brought their kids to swimming lessons, that would probably be willing to, you know, board and say, I want my kids to continue to typically get there.
Right, and, I mean, for us to continue swimming lessons, obviously, we have to become a pool.
Well, that's, that's the, that's the, and people don't, they don't want the pool to go away.
Right, right.
You know, and so, for, you know, for us to continue to have these things in our communities, we have to continue to invest in it.
Yeah. Same for that.
It's also, it's called, uh, it's kind of the, kind of going with the.
Perfect.
Or the.
Although we don't want much sand there on the pool.
No.
Kind of does. Um, any other fundraising ideas before we move on, but obviously, we kind of jumped around and talked about grants and stuff like that, but any, any fundraising ideas that we have?
Did you, did you, the first one we got the grant, it's a big, it's a back there, so.
I, I had come back, yeah, I had one, but I mean, Tony just brought the grant, so I thought it was a fundraising idea.
Okay, I, I would, I would. Um, other fundraising ideas, I mean, I think, I, I do know the teachers, um, their cost at this, just five dollars. If you were to hit about, you know, twelve one, it's like twelve fifty dollars per teacher, coming up for twenty. So, if that was to coincide with all of your other activities, you'd make fifty dollars per teacher around there, and not a lot of the labor and that sort of stuff. Just to have the fundraising student out. I don't, our, you know, provide our, I do do all the, that's the topic, and, yeah, um, that's what it's about.
We could do that in conjunction with, like, what you were talking about with, uh, uh, the days we've been cooking out today, things like that, and have four teachers, because, like, a high support.
A lot. Yeah, something like that, I don't know, I, I, I'd prefer to see that, but I believe it's more.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Sounds fun. Okay. We'll move on to grants, I know exactly what they didn't stop, so.
Well, I, exactly, I, I am, I'm poorly and sadly underprepared, I, I thought it was gonna be that guy.
Did, did you receive that email?
I did not receive the email from her, but she did call me after I was talking to you.
Yeah.
Um, cause I told her to get in contact with you, but I can't remember from the committee, committee, that they said you're a grant guru, or.
Not, not really, but you're kind of had a system down where you could figure out where there were grants together, something like that, but.
Overall, just really good funding, that's all I, it's just my, it's my plan. Um, but, yeah, I found the team, and I found the exact numbers, um, but it was mainly like different businesses in the kind of non-house corporations that they just fund money to do in school projects. Um, I, I will, you'll, you'll have that email before you, maybe all the homes in the U.A.R. Um, but one of them that I can remember off the top of my head is Fields. Um, they're doing new projects, like, it's, it's not like a half and half naturally, that would be fantastic, maybe you can join the, you know, layer it on top of that. Layer it on top for, to that more, to get us to that halfway point.
Right.
Which is played really well, and gives them, like, the layers, and the tiers, bronze, lead, and the silver, figures, or whatever, you know, and then, and they would get that as well, if they're grant funded, so. Fields, and there's like, I think some mostly primary and man dance, had one, but I'll just have hold it, do it, maybe at home, or. Right, well, that is a good product, I even, I think it did, that's the best stuff, like, just, and it's like, uh, going, just going to college, it's like, just fly for everything you can.
Oh, really?
It's pretty like the fly, it's, yeah, there, there's like, there's kind of random things, but that, still, that still had applications, and they have a sort of, doing in the community, or causing of that.
Um, yeah, I had grants in there, so I did do it.
We did a little bit about these, so I had that in there, so, for her, this is, yeah.
What do you think of bringing that up?
Two ladies, they live in South Dakota, they have an organization called Realize the More. And they will, you know, give events, causes, and they, they prefer they will work into all the grant, so, so that capacity is available. But if you need that, like, then you gotta, you know, try to do, but they send the information to you, you know, to after round to you, that would, like, um, the school or so.
Perfect.
After, I'll give the webinar with them.
Anything else, grant wise, I'll probably go a little more into it, but that's fine.
We had something, no, she had, no, she had something come up. I mean, we had, uh, through the states, um, with our big one, I mean, that's, uh, that's, that's the big day, the only one that's really out there, there were a few in the past that were, that were there, and there's. You know, other, you know, just a full type ones, that they were more rich, just, you know, and that's where, um, one of those things, they talked to us last month, they, they were kind of a daily, a dollar short drink. Told us that was all for the grants, for Parks and Rec, um, um, kind of make them bigger, make them better, uh, for people to do things, but it was kind of like, kind of slowly phased out. They said they were doing pool projects within a year or two, because there was somebody grant that these, uh, Parks and Rec were getting, I believe they, um, they said, so.
Okay. Uh, number seven, business and personal donations, um, going back to the letter, I, I think, obviously, one, going back to the letter again, we gotta review a letter. Um, obviously, one, a little better letter typed out, more of what we're actually doing, um, kind of how the pool can play the part in our community. Um, obviously, one, get a little better letter typed out, more of what we're actually doing, um, kind of how the pool can play the part in our community, not that it's just there to spill the water in the summertime. Um, and then sending, uh, some personal letters out to people of the community, getting in contact with, maybe hopefully the school has some alumni addresses that we could get ahold of. Um, sending letters to alumni, different, stuff like that, um, donations, and then, um, even, I think, even if they do, you know, getting the, before we do this, I would like to visit with this company or the grant, to see, you know, what it all entails, cause I mean, just say, hey, whatever we raise, um, you know, there's.
Like, we're applying.
We're gonna be applying to the grant that, um, would match all of our donations we received. I think it would be huge, uh, push as well, too, writing those letters.
I wonder if what you were putting together to put out in like a newsletter, or something like that, to get out of the community, right?
Yeah, once, like, kind of a whole coalition plan is in place.
Yeah.
Yeah, they know what the letters, the one, this caution I would say with that is just, making careful not just like, just sending it out to a business. You know, and then just kind of like, watching it, and that's just, sometimes you send it to a business, and it's like, is that the right person to get the maximum dollars? You know, or is it a phone call, or go in there and pull.
My plan for business wise, um, I personally, I know Stewie had talked about it too, I wanna go into businesses instead of just mailing them out or emailing them to the businesses. I, obviously, I think that the personal touch of you actually carrying, driving to a business, walking in their doors, um, is bigger than sending an email.
Well, yeah, then you can go in and guilt them into it, right?
You know, what is it, bring a little kid that went to swimming lessons, have Ben give a letter.
Yeah, I, I, I would say that probably between, you know, a lot of the people involved with this, you know, some of the heads up for some of these people, or these companies that are the ones that talk to them, and give you a letter of any of them, right?
Yeah, just, you know, like, all the kids with the swimming lessons, get that to China, and I, and I know, and I know that with some of the bigger businesses, obviously, there's challenges, and different ways they do around what it's asked for, but some of the bigger ones, you gotta send out. Um, but I agree, I think that personal touch of hand delivering a letter and then figuring out, instead of, um, giving it to just a bank teller, instead of the.
Yes, oh, it was good.
Um, giving it to the right person, and obviously, maybe if we don't see something, and take one of some, a follow up, is also, don't want to put that in touch, you know, two weeks after you walked in there, hey. I don't wanna do that either, yeah.
Um, and news is adopted, and one, twenty even for them is due, but with this letter, it slightly increased the cost, by having a call to action immediately, like a little tweet of the letter. And it's in the letter, it's like, donate now, like, you know, I give it to, to nonprofits, they tell you that, and it's a monthly donation, or whatever. Donate now, silver sphere, gold sphere, bronze sphere, and then, you know, you really want to go in and just put an envelope, to sort of address, maybe that's as easy and clean as possible for them to send it back.
I think you do with a project like this, you want, you know, if you guys are open, you would have an option, not even just for a one time donation, but, you know, whether, say, five years, like, you know, maybe the business can't, you know, give a big amount all at once, but maybe every year, they can give so much, and, you know, getting those commitments, you know, can be, that, that can be an alternative source, getting some more money too.
Or even other matches, right, so like, going out to like the power plant, or whatever, you, you, you emulate a little bit of this thing stuff, like, if it's a full match guy, well, maybe the power plant north will match up to ten thousand dollars a dollar. You know, just like that, for, for the, people like leveraging their money, and they do that, soon, we would have walked in, where the process of, and, like, yeah, that's what we're doing, this is what we got planned, we do what we're doing, sort of thing, and, you know, so, it's not right. Appreciate it. I'll get input from you. A lot you don't think about. Um, anything else on letters, any other suggestions, you know, Brock, do you have anything?
Yeah, I was, uh, thinking, are we gonna make a list, uh, companies that we're gonna do, or just kind of be, uh, just kind of going after, just, uh, uh, say, a lot of big businesses, and I mean, you could do somebody, I mean, I mean, you could do a water, and, you know.
Right.
Kind of have a list up, or what?
I think, um, we have a really good list, I think all the course with the names of the people, but you can say that, I, I have to pull up the all course. Um, any other thing?
We, George, our local businesses, obviously, kind of, on this, uh, in the fundraising ideas, something that we, uh, should be going through later, on a, like, round of, having a dart, activate the water, if people are getting things, um, from, what they're doing, doing that, but, uh, picking back on, uh, what Paul said, I believe, he said that, um, not putting, uh, pennies for pools, or whatever, kind of putting a condensed letter on there of what the money is all pertaining, and.
I really think that if you're gonna, if you're gonna do that, in the case of the washer, you need to have at least one person there.
Right, and I, and what is this, washroom?
It's both fit.
For me, yeah.
Having, I kind of have a plan of, for the monthly meeting, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, um, I guess, just, just a comment on that, obviously, that's, that's why I said, right, and that sort of stuff, but maybe there's now, for someone to stare and still have a message about it too. Sort of like an indirect contact, if I'm going to the booth, or whatever, there to be a time, asking them, and the masses, they're like, sort of saying, okay, well, this is what we're doing, and, and as you said, this was money for, and just wide, little presentation, and there's a box over there, sort of thing.
Yeah.
I'll go talk to you. Um, doing that, um, I don't know, yeah, I agree, I think, and like, having them come to us, cause how many times do you actually go to a booth, to actually do, if they're all about, I don't know. Uh, but obviously, having somebody there, talking a lot, for questions, um, issues, and then, maybe having an all around, well, work, I'm not accused publicly, I know I love to talk, but I get nervous for a lot of people. Uh, anything else on, can you tell us that local businesses, Dana? Can you do service on the platform?
Uh, I'm gonna wait down there.
Um, and I think not just our, you know, honestly, local businesses, but if the bank is willing to let us put a jar, I think you guys do some different, like, giving parts, did, um, different things, maybe you can partner up them for a pie in the face, like they've done in the past, to another fundraising idea, where I could even get something out of the golf course. Something, yeah, out of the golf course in the summertime, too, out there, uh.
Is that a good, is that a good?
The bank, uh, credit union, um, obviously, George, George, the outpatient, uh, but one thing with that too, is like I said, we can't let these jars hang out there for, uh, weeks on end, and we're not collecting them, wanna say they're full, um, but also having groups that lose change, sitting around, I don't want somebody to get disappointed, you know, if it's just a penny here, a dollar here, you know, that we just got five dollars. We gotta stay on top of it, too, maybe having designated people on the park board, to say, hey, you have all the outpatient, you have all the banks, you have all the bars, and that, uh, things like that.
Maybe just bring a same idea, so it's a digital age, um, on a similar information, have to get QR codes, if you give electronics, it's too, maybe we would like a square, if we have a gel, or whatever.
I, I don't know, we can set that up as, as a municipality, I don't know, if you're looking at that first.
Have to look into that.
But if you can, and I think it's a good idea, and now we do, we have things, it's like, oh, the park's in a bin, and then, and then, and then, but it's just give, just like that, so, you know, easy to handle for people.
Or kind of like, like QR code, and you get, uh, uh, right, right.
I mean, I don't know why we, really why we ever do this, probably even like a bankroll, special time, for actually two years, bank account, bank account, it'd be like, no difference than us going to get a credit card, or, uh, to accept that. Fact of Venmo up to that.
Bank account.
We said going to the Venmo account, you got to just, like, do a center, but, I mean, if we give the information to Paul.
Yeah.
So if you don't wanna do it, I, I really don't wanna do it by myself, I would want somebody else, so.
Yeah, we're not supposed to have access to anything in person, but, but asking stuff like that from a person, but, I mean, technically, wouldn't be tested, so I'd have to run it by, guarantee if there's something else, and.
Something in stock, well, yeah, absolutely.
No, that's a really, actually, that's a really good idea, especially the, getting into where we're in now, of.
I'm just really not able to use cards, you know, you know, it's a lot, like, you don't take that, I don't care if cash, much.
Like, if something's, I can give out to, and have your little QR code, activate the block, or, or if people are walking in the door, too.
What's it, you do a, you do, and that, I think, media post on the website, or, I don't know why you need a website, but, but this is media post, and then media posters.
Right.
It's very, just in graphics, I got QR codes, dirty online, it's still has it, but, yeah.
Yeah, it's a teacher.
You're a teacher.
Yeah, sure. First of all, for the volunteer, you get the volunteer to watch out for the, you know, you don't let the volunteer stand, and stop, actually, personally, I'll get nothing.
Yeah. Um, anything else, George, our local businesses, any other businesses, or other ideas to go around the businesses, you know, that don't necessarily have, or sort of, or another way that they could possibly, you know, with change, or.
Yeah, probably most of them, when they're, yeah, bars, you know, real, then, cafe, then. And I will make a motion to adjourn, but.